There we are.
There it's green now.
Now we're green. Okay. Seven o'clock, I officially call this planning board meeting to order. Is so is Jim?
He's on.
He's on remotely?
Yeah.
So am I allowed to appoint him as the alternate to the board even though he's not present?
We've had members participate remotely, sure.
Jim, can you hear us?
You might have.
Yeah, Jim, I appoint you as an alternate, as a voting member of the board this evening. Okay. Approval of the minutes from May seventh. You might have noticed that the minutes actually say April sixteenth.
That was one of my notes.
Any comments on the amendments to the minutes besides the date?
I only have one on page three at the very top. It's the last line under other business. Bruce encouraged all to drive out Fish Road into New Ipswich to view the development. We should say the development site because there's no development yet.
Anybody else?
Who can accept the minutes is amended.
Second.
Carter, can you vote?
Yes.
Yes, sir. I vote yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, minutes are accepted. Oh, Jim, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
All right, super. Thank you. I'm gonna probably forget you. It's not gonna be the first time this evening. But don't be, don't be afraid to chime in if I. Do that. Okay, invitation for public comment. See anybody here? So that leads us to a new business. So we have Todd Warner here. Right from Southwest, welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're looking forward to hearing all about what you have to tell us. So the floor is yours.
Sure, yeah. Hi, everyone. Glad to be here. So again, my name is Todd Warner. And the new executive director of Southwest Region Planning Commission. I've been a staffer there for about six years and as I acclimate to my new role, I've been making an attempt to get out to all of our member municipalities and speak with planning boards and others, mostly to hear from our communities about what's top of mind for them, what are priorities that the planning commission should be aware of so that we can better inform our work grant program to be of assistance to to you all. So that's, I think that's really the goal, at least my goal for tonight is to hear from you all what some priorities might be and to bring that back to our team and and to, yeah, discuss how we can be of assistance. I can also share a little bit about some projects that we're working on right now that might be of interest to you all, including one right here in town, a development of a complete streets policy. So happy to discuss that further, but before I jump into that, I know Christine knows what we do in the commission, but would it be helpful for me just to provide a quick overview of what we are and what are our priorities?
Yeah, please.
Sure, yeah. So essentially, regional planning commissions are nine across the state of New Hampshire and in RPC is a voluntary association of municipalities. So Southwest Region Planning Commission, we have thirty-three member municipalities. You know, Chedder County, Western Hillsborough County, and one town in Sullivan County. And our governing body is composed by our commissioners. Each town is entitled to two commissioners. It's thankful that Christine is is one of our commissioners and all those serves on our board of directors. And we, I like to sum up what we do using about three bullet points. So one is we provide technical assistance to towns on public policy issues, things like land use, transportation, housing, public health, economic development. So that could look like a number of different things, including like, for example, last week I got a call from a select board member in Alstead asking if our team could take a look at a stormwater infrastructure grant and maybe advise them on how to approach that application. So that's one example. Another is if a town has specific zoning or land use related question, we're we're in a position to field inquiries that kind. The other role that we play is really a resource connector, so helping our towns identify, understand, one, what funding opportunities are out there for different planning related projects. But also helping interface between our towns and higher levels of government, whether that's a state agency, state legislators. We work fairly closely with our federal delegation to help our folks in Washington understand what are the priorities on the ground. So being that communicator between different levels of government is another role that we play. And also, we serve as a regional convener. So a lot of public policy issues, they don't start and stop according to town lines, things like the housing market, workforce, river sheds, they don't respect municipal boundaries and they're not going to benefit in having cross-town communication and coordination on issues like that. So those are three of the primary roles that that we play.
If I could just give another great example, when we were looking at broadband in town, we were meeting, I think, monthly with Henry Underwood at SWRPT, who was getting together representatives from all the towns in the region and we were helping each other out really. So that was really, it was instrumental in getting broadband here.
Yeah, we don't claim to have all the answers, but there's a lot of innovation happening in each one of our communities. So if we can take a good idea, in the case of broadband, really starting Chesterfield to help spread that to our other municipalities, that's, that's a role that we want, right? So any questions so far? Christine was kind enough to develop and outline us some discussion topics, things that she thought you all might be interested in talking about. One of those was technical assistance related to land use issues like site plan review, regulations, subdivision, rights, regs, driveway, zoning, and also regulatory development through the Housing Opportunity, Housing Opportunity Planning Grant Program. And I'm happy to talk about that, but for my own benefit, it would be, it'd be helpful to hear where the HOP activities stand at this point and what discussion there's been about moving forward with some regulatory development for, so.
Chris. I don't know. So Carter and Russ are our representatives on our Housing Opportunity Subcommittee, I guess, the fur that's doing the community engagement. So I don't know if you guys want to field that question or?
Sure, yeah. So we've been, our committee has been doing community engagement for the past year. And we are about to wrap that up and then provide a recommendation to the planning board in terms of zoning changes, potential zoning changes. Do you rest your hands in anything there?
There's not a lot. I think we've kind of narrowed it down to really a few specific items that might get right here to look at. As far as the community, community.
Yeah, I mean, we ran quite a few. As well as a lot of one-on-one conversations. And so we, we have some input, not
Yeah.
a majority of the community, but I think that's somewhat maybe to be expected. But I think, I think we have enough input to be able to make, make recommendations.
Okay.
So we also received funding to update the master plan.
Okay.
So we worked with Ivy Van and Carol Obey. So they, Carol, I think mainly has been the one working on the master plan chapters for us, and we have some drafts, but we ran into some issues with the maps. Which, because we don't have GIS maps.
Okay.
So the maps that we got from, you know, doing the natural resources review don't match up with our tax maps. And so they weren't super useful for us to know where the lines are, property lines.
Are your tax, tax ma- maps digitized or?
They're digitized, but they're not coordinated to like in the eighty-three or something, so overlay. They're landing space not where
Okay.
necessarily over the ground where they should be, and they're not all to scale in the same way. So some lots look a little bigger than they really are and some lots small. No, they, they need to be tweaked a bit. And so they weren't that helpful to overlay the top notch at the management, the undersides that you can use.
And I would add that like nearly every subdivision application that we've had since I've been on, there's been a discrepancy between the tax map and the survey. Not everyone, but a lot of them, like the two that we're gonna look at tonight.
Two more.
They're both, they each have an issue. So, you know, this is something that we, I mean, not every lot was mapped, was surveyed in town, you know, I'm sure this is the fame in other small towns, but so we run into that issue, but we are waiting on the maps. Moosewood Ecological has been looking at our natural resources and they felt like they could do something with our maps. So they have the avatar data and they have the maps that they created and they're trying to put something together for us. So we have maps that are usable. We did talk to Henry as well. That may have been one of our first stops when we were trying to figure out what to do about maps.
And was that June?
Yeah, we actually have a message from Jeff from last week that he's expects to have it by the end of the month.
So we're close.
Yeah, we're getting close.
I think they expect to be back.
Yeah, I think our next session, we're gonna.
Yeah, I think it's all gonna come together at the same time, just when we're gonna start meeting once a month.
Right.
I would also add that Ivy and Carol did a regulatory review of our subdivision site plan and zoning ordinance and made some suggestions. We took on a couple of them this year, nothing really major. But we'll look at all of that, including the natural resources audit that Jeff Littleton did for us from Moosewood and try to put it all together. So these guys don't know this yet, but I just was reading today about the funding, the next round of funding that we could potentially apply for more for regulatory development.
Yes.
And the deadline is September thirtieth.
Yeah.
But there's no application yet. So we're, I mean, which is fine, because we're still waiting for the feedback from the HOP grant committee. So I think the timing will be all right for us, but I don't know what your resources are if we were looking for help with regulatory development. What, what sort of? I think it's Carol, right? Is that who we're using right now or?
That's who we've been using along with myself and other in-house staff.
Okay.
For that work, I, I it's a need that many of our communities have, and so I like to make it a priority. So you know, it's a matter of aligning timelines, you know, our staff capacity and there may be opportunities to bring on contract staff to help boost our capacity to respond to the needs on help regarding zoning amendments, other land use regulatory issues.
What exactly, when you're saying that, what exactly? An example, what you're talking about, like you talking about a specific paragraph and helping us change the words and make it normal sound or?
It would be, it would be, I mean, one scenario would be developing zoning amendments for the town of Warner. So if there are, if there are findings coming out of your your HOP work, you know, they might be smaller, you know, this year, if you want to take out, you know, a bite-sized chunk of what that work has led to so far, that, that could be, one thing is prioritize and maybe a couple zoning amendments to draft.
And you would help raise the volume, is that the idea?
Yeah, it would be the idea, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, because right now we're going back and forth with our attorney and it's not, it's been hugely frustrating.
I'm, I'm what, what else you?
We were taking our subdivision regulations really at this point just organized. Not disorganized, but making them more organized. And changing a few words here and there to match up state regulation. And we submit that people discussed why you changed this, changed that, so we do that.
Months.
Yeah.
Months of work. And it's a pretty significant change that we're making. I don't want to like, it's, we've changed quite a bit, but it is, like you said, it's mostly formatting type of stuff, but.
To make it more user-friendly.
Yeah, yeah, it's a bowl, like make it more user-friendly. Yes. And we knew that we were not in compliance with some state RSA, so those were changed. So it's that kind of stuff that, you know.
Yeah, I, I don't want to represent that we can replace your town council.
Of course not, no.
But you look at the.
Yeah, yeah, it, you know, if it if you have, I mean, a role that you can play is that the community has a goal regarding land use developments and how to make that fit with your current zoning ordinance, that could be a role for us to play. Are there, what, whether, you know, coming out of the HOP work, looking towards town meeting and next year, are there specific issues that you think might be ready to bring to the voters or is that still maybe a step away at this point?
That's. I mean, I'm sure we'll have something, but what exactly that is, like this mine, I think we need to let the chair speak for that.
We haven't heard all the time yet.
I can tell you, I mean, I, I know we've been talking about ADU zoning, that we know there are some issues with the existing language, so it just even cleaning it up. Whether it changes or not, it's cleaning it up, but that needs to be done.
So this article here in the Union Leader, George.
Yeah.
So nice to be able to copy for us. How many towns were there here, George? This, this article's amazing.
Thank you, Mr. Seven or eight.
Seven or eight towns.
Yeah.
And a lot of them are in
Yeah.
Southwest. Everybody's, every town is jumping on modifying their ADU regulations. That just seems like a no-brainer, you know, but you know, trying to get ahead of ourselves.
I think that should be addressed, it's somewhat of a, like, doesn't read well to begin with.
Right, right.
It's confusing.
It's confusing. So I think there's steps there that we can take to clean that language up and maybe simplify it as well. I think that's, I think that that's something that we'll tackle. But we'll see.
Well, it feels like strictly if you're already working with a bunch of towns and
Right, and you already have an idea.
I'm already, I'm out of knowledge there, you can help us.
Absolutely, yeah, there. I mean, Peterborough has leaned in pretty heavily into accessory zoning, they, they just held a couple of plus twos, actually, the a dozen or so ADUs that are in Peterborough today, just to give folks a sense of what they look like and types of properties where they've been developed and the folks who went on the trajectory by it. One of the ADUs, just to see firsthand what they can look like and have an opportunity to speak with the owners, you know, talk about things like cost and what it takes from a financial standpoint to develop one of these things. So there is a, a growing body of, of knowledge within the region about accessories, well, and like with broadband where you took an idea that had traction in one community, helping other towns just, you know, become more aware of what's going on in the neighboring communities.
Yeah. So Todd, if we get to that point where we're ready and we want to apply for a grant, would somebody from SWRPT be able to help us put some numbers to that?
So, just from my own understanding, so for the grant, the grant could be used to pay us?
Yes.
To pay them to do the work to help us, right?
Exactly. They would be our consultants. Yeah.
Yeah, and, and whether we were served as the consultant or not, I think we could we could help craft the application. That's a time-sensitive piece.
Right.
Getting that application before September thirtieth. Just to maintain the maximum amount of flexibility, you could leave it open-ended as far as who would ultimately serve as your consultant, but.
Who helped you with the original HOP?
Originally Lisa Murphy from SWRPT, who's, who's not there anymore. But she helped us, we got the award and then we found that they couldn't work with us because they didn't have the staff. So we ended up
Carol and Ivy, right?
Making some revisions and, yeah. And Carol and Ivy agreed to work within the same parameters, so.
Uh, we're still very busy, but like I said, it's a matter of prioritizing and, you know, identifying areas where we can have some wiggle room as from a timeframe standpoint and, yeah. Are there other aspects of, of land use regulation that are top of mind for you all? I mean, subdivision, site plan review, driveway regulations, anywhere where I can, you know, updo a little bit of digging on, on specific topics under, under that category?
Well, driveway is one we've been working on for a while too.
Yeah, we, you know, have a, a draft plan, state came out with a new RSA last year, that talked about loosening regulations for driveways greater than a hundred and fifty feet as long as they're wide enough to meet their requirements. But it puts us in an interesting quandary because we only regulate, we currently regulate the first thirty feet of the driveway. So in incorporating this, which appears to be a requirement of the state, as best I can tell, we have to expand our at least wording in our regulations to, to something that says, hey, if your, I forget the exact width, it was eight, nine, or twelve feet wide, but if your driveway is greater than a hundred and fifty feet and is meets the width requirement, no other requirements that could flow, that flow down from the state fire marshals office block. So it appears to be an attempt to reduce regulation, however, in our particular cases adds wording and has regulations where relatively simple regulations. So we're, so just work for that and get the wording right.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I think that's a good example of if you have a draft that you'd like another set of ideas on. That could be something our staff pitches at.
And, and so that doesn't cost anything or does cost something if you consult on something like our driveway regulations?
In this case, it, it really depends on whether we have a grant funding source to support the work. Transportation-related issues, we have a fairly steady funding source through DOT to provide technical assistance on transportation-related items.
Okay.
And, and so in this case, we could provide some technical assistance free of charge.
Okay, so it depends on what the topic is.
Yeah.
Yeah, so when Lisa took the first path at it like two years ago, I think it was funded by a grant.
Yeah.
So Lisa, see, Lisa looked at driver regs.
Right, but it was before the change to the RS, yeah, to the RSA, so.
And there's another, another, it's another site is, it's in the process, I mean, we just did shipbacks, driveways onto state highways. Something different.
So the Highway Garage Project. I, I think Christine, in identifying this, you're, you're maybe interested in hearing about any funding opportunities.
Yeah, that's probably something maybe Bruce, you can talk about what the committee is working on.
Yeah, we have a highway garage study group that is involved with the current highway garage. And if, if, you know, whether we, what we do, if anything, as a town. And, but if we did decide to tear down and rebuild and stay in the same location, we were told that there could be grants available for that.
So i- it, the structure, it houses highway department vehicles, is that the sole purpose?
Yes.
And try that thing. Okay, yeah. Yeah, and what is the, what is the issue with the current structure? Is it just?
Well, one of the structures is old, an old block building, and it needs repair. And so, and if it was torn down, it might create parking that we think we need, and then we could build a more modern building, similar size that had, you know, to have a wood stove in it.
It's got a wood stove.
It was built in the early sixties, so the thought process, I think, but we still have to have forums and we have to have a lot more input from the town, but where the committee's going that one of the, one of the, besides doing nothing and just you know, painting and fixing what we have. One of the thoughts would be to tear the old block building down and build another heated tuva garage to replace it on the property. And would there be funds available for something like that?
Yeah. Yeah, this, this tech project is actually somewhat difficult to find grant funding for. I mean, the one the one funding source that comes to mind to me is actually the US Department of Agriculture. They have a community facilities grant and loan program. Need to meet certain criteria in order to qualify for a grant, but they also offer low-interest, long-term loans that might be more advantageous than going, going out and selling bond to support the, the work. So that, that's the funding source that comes immediately to mind for me. Other funding sources might be available if you combine other town functions with this highway garage. For example, there's a lot more money for emergency operation centers and like emergency shelter type projects than there are for highway garages or even fire departments. I mean, a lot of our towns need new fire departments and it's really challenging to find grant funding for fire departments. They, to my knowledge, the towns recently that built them, Westmoreland and Peterborough have really needed to just ask the voters to. Built them, um, Westmoreland and Peterborough have really needed to just ask the voters to. Uh.
The Peterborough just just passed.
It just passed.
Sort of an emergency operations center, yes, was kind of interesting. Um, and I don't know if the town currently has a designated. Emergency operations center or, you know. Uh, heating, emergency heated space or a cooling center, um, that's designated.
You have the long.
Officially, elementary school, but.
Yeah.
Not guaranteed.
Yeah. Let's walk with them.
It doesn't belong to the town, no.
So, I mean, our emergency operations center is the emergency director's uh living room with a salon.
Right.
Look, that piggyback.
Or the fire department, right? Yeah.
Well, on your fact, piggyback, can you turn that down? There's also an enclosed shit, it's heated. Can that also be the emergency? Shelter? Not really so, more of an emergency shelter in town zone.
Put a big sign up.
I think just putting a sign is probably not gonna do it. Um, Todd, are you working with New Ipswich um on there? Don't they have a highway garage project happening? It might be a Brownfields site.
Yes, um, it's it's a cur- it's currently a um. It is a town of a property that has some contamination issues and. Um, they are participating in our Brownfields assessment program to better understand those contamination issues so that. The property um can ultimately be redeveloped by a private property owner, um, but that, um. I I don't think their plan is to construct a new highway. Our ability on that site.
Yeah, I know where that is, that's, that's right near the uh. Soviet ambulance, it's right near the highway garage used to be.
Right.
Yeah, right on one, right on one twenty four.
You can put a Dunkin' Donuts.
A Dunkin' Donuts, yeah.
Uh, so I'm I'm happy to provide a bit more information about the USDA program.
That would be great.
Um, setting up a call with the the field um. Rep to see what they say, whether they think the project could be fit for their program.
We'll need to break down, we're looking at, on that committee, we have maybe four different scenarios, but that's, we haven't done our forms yet, but. Just something we came up with, that'd be something that if we showed you that, you could. Target like one, because well, none of these others qualify, but this one will qualify for this.
Yeah, that would be helpful if you have a few different scenarios articulated in writing. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, it would help letting. People as well understand, right?
Right.
Yeah, well, as we move forward.
Yeah.
The forums involve the town people. The more we know, the better.
Um, and then. The complete street streets project that I mentioned earlier, so. Um, for folks who aren't familiar with the term complete streets. Are streets that are designed to serve a variety of users, including folks on foot. Like, um, public transit, uh.
Horseback.
Horseback.
And temple.
No horses, yeah, we don't have any horses in town.
Uh, yeah, it's. Yeah, it's funny, the equestrian folks, when we've done rail trail planning projects, equestrian folks, they turn out and.
Yeah.
They say do not pave the rail trail.
They're a, they're a big group.
Yeah. Um. But, uh, yeah, so we're working with, uh, it's a. Ad hoc committee, uh, that's been working in coordination with the the select board to. Develop a a complete streets policy and design guidelines for for the town, um. Uh, at Southwest, we manage um some funding on on behalf of an organization called the Manalak Alliance for Sustainable Transportation. And um, they focus on. As their name indicates, different modes of transportation and. Uh, they were awarded uh some funding from an anonymous donor to. Help support complete streets projects, including both. Planning work like the project we're um working on in Temple as well as. Planning and engineering and even building um projects like. In the town of Swansea, for example, they used our program to build uh their sidewalk network in West Swansea Village.
I think in Harrisville, too, there was some rail trail or something to connect the rail trail to the downtown, that was a few years ago.
Yeah, they've, they have a committee, actually JB's visiting with uh Monroe to talk about. Um, work in that they've been up to, but um. As far as I know, they haven't accessed, they may have access funding to develop a policy a few years ago. But they haven't um moved for the specific projects. But the policy is is the starting point um for implementing a particular project like the sidewalk or. Safety improvement and at at crossing crosswalks or watching beacons, um, that sort of thing.
Um, so it's just is a policy, is it looking at the town as a whole or specifically the town center?
It's looking at the town as a whole. Um, so the policy will include um an aspirational statement recognizing the need to. Design a road network that serves a variety of users, um, it will also, um. It will also include an implementation plan that, uh, you know, says this is how we're going to achieve these goals. Um, and in fact, um. I thought it was serendipitous that speaking with you tonight because uh my understanding is that there hasn't been. Um, much communication yet between the planning board and and the group that is is working on this. Um, policy and the policy could conceivably identify things that the. The planning might consider doing um in order to advance complete students like. Um, including provisions in your site plan review regulations or subdivision regulations that. Uh, support things like like water delivery um in the neighborhood setting. Um. The the project is still very much uh. In, you know, in process, and there's actually a community survey that has been released to gather. Input from residents that's wrapping up um this week, um, if you haven't. Seen that hit your inbox yet, maybe I'll. Follow up tomorrow with with a link if you're interested in taking a look at that, um.
Has everyone seen that?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So how does that work in terms of like, so you develop this policy and then. It's available. And not that we have a lot of new roads being built, but how, so you're gonna have goals and a plan to get to that?
Yeah, so why?
How would it ever get implemented?
Does the, does the town people vote on this, or is it a selectman decision?
It's a selectman, the selectmen would vote.
So it doesn't need to be go for a warrant or a vote from the town?
That not, not my.
The policy doesn't, because it's just a statement, it's like a commitment, we're committing to try to make.
The apple.
Paper and more user friendly. But any changes to any ordinance, those would be voted on.
So it might, so it might inform the master plan, which.
Exactly, yep, yeah, that was where, what I was thinking too, that could go, I think in our master plan, that is one of the recommendations in the future land use chapter. Is to consider adopting complete streets, so that's from years ago.
So about twenty years ago, we. Uh, I'd say we, the selectmen, I believe at the time, because I do not remember ever having a town vote. But we decided to do, like a lot of towns do. Uh, have our speed limit, have the sign say Temple's speed limit. It's thirty miles an hour unless otherwise posted. And we definitely, it was a copycat thing, we got that from the Amherst Hollis or some other surrounding towns. So I'm wondering, is it some, something, is that something like? How your policy works, recommendations and things like that?
Yeah, um, i- i- yes, certainly, so one, one example could be, um. Adjusting the lane widths on certain types of roads because narrowing lane widths has been shown to actually calm traffic and slow down. Motor vehicle speeds and it also provides space for pedestrians to walk on on the shoulder, so. That can be an example of a specific um measure that the policy and design guidelines could reference. It can als- a policy can also, um. One way the policy could be implemented is through routine maintenance, so if a road is. Um, slated to be repaved, considering that as an opportunity to. Restrike the the road according to the recommendations of of the policy. Um, and then if there's more significant. Road reconstruction work happening, that could be an opportunity for um more significant improvements, that's really. You know, unless the town is willing to, um, you know. Just invest, you know, in a project, um, kind of out of some, out of the routine maintenance cycle, that can be fairly costly, so identifying those times, communicating with the. The road agent and the DPW crew about when roads are planned for reviving that, that's what a policy can really.
Yeah, and and Kent Perry is our road agent, he's on the committee.
Good, so you might recommend, well, I just like, what's one of the side laws and tables? You might, when you want to down here. That would be the implementation from your end, and then we would have to wait for something to happen. Or decide. Of funding.
Yeah, or potentially, like I said, if, once you develop this policy, the town then becomes eligible for implementation money through this particular funding source that. We administer at the planning commission. Um, and although. Uh, local match is part of the. Uh, proposal assessment process, if not required, so. Um, but in the case of Swansea, they applied for um funding through our program. As part of a larger project in West Swansea, they were doing stormwater work in.
And a whole infrastructure project there.
Yeah, the whole infrastructure project, and then they apply for this funding for the sidewalk construction specifically.
And Todd, you, so you obviously know from being, meeting with the committee that. We're a little unique here in Temple where we have three state highways in our town, Route one oh one, Route forty five, and then General Miller right here that. Runs down towards Wilton. Does your project, your policies affect the state roads as well as the town in our town?
The design guidelines will will speak to the whole road network, including, um. The state maintained state owned routes, um, but the recommendations will likely include, um. You know, communication with DOT as as necessary, but DOT, if. I mean, they've shown that, um, you know, they have a certain way of doing things, but they have shown a willingness. If a community expresses interest and desire for improvements on state owned routes, they're willing to work with the community to implement those measures, but. It requires communication for initiation with DOT.
And I think the policy, like, it would be up to, I guess, the select board to decide if they want to. Um, make recommendations for changes or require, like, with a zoning change, you know, it's not. Adopting the policy doesn't mean more regulations necessarily, right?
No, yeah, it's not, I would, it's, like I said, it's not an ordinance, it's a resolution that's articulating a. Aspirational statement and also some specific action items that could support that state. Yes.
Right.
Jimmy, you still there?
Yes, I am.
Good, you, try him in anytime you want.
Yeah.
So you can, you can imagine coming out, this could be a traffic calming initiative to narrow lanes through painting. So that when the state next paints Route forty five, well, we make a request that they narrow things up.
Yeah, maybe.
If, you know, but you see in other neighborhoods, it does slow things down without enforcement.
Yep, so I'm talented, made that specific request and DOT has responded. It's all about timing, right, knowing when they're gonna repay the state route and communicating ahead of time.
Yeah, like they're getting ready to pay General Miller right now.
This week. Yes.
Be a little way down.
Yeah, yeah. Narrow lanes and crosswalks and the sign, and also everybody has to slow down.
Does that include uh circles by chance? Is that an a, an adoption recommendation?
Like a rotary?
Yeah, rotary, sorry, yep. Just curious.
Um, I think it would depend on the context and also the design of the roundabout, I mean. Some roundabouts are um designed to um accommodate, you know, say a fifteen mile per hour. Uh, travel speed and that could be pedestrian friendly, but if it's uh, if it's like the traffic circle. Winchester Street in in Keene, that's not the greatest place to be as.
It's to be at car.
True, yeah.
Unfortunately, rotaries depend on on all the drivers, understanding the concept of a rotor.
Right.
Okay, well.
I think the last thing was legislative update, is there anything we should be keeping an eye on that we're.
Yeah, um. Most of the housing related bills that I was tracking don't seem to be moving forward this legislative session. There was one that was on ADUs that was generating um quite a bit of a buzz, um, but. It it seems like it was cut by the House, but it didn't move forward in the Senate, it went down.
Did you see the message that came out today, though, from NHMA that there was an amendment made to Senate bill that they tried to. They're trying to put them back in, that one and the parking one?
Oh, I didn't see that.
Yeah, it just came today. This afternoon, so they're supposed to tomorrow, one of them's tomorrow, the other one's.
You want?
Twelve ninety one and. Um, let me see, I think I printed it. Hmm. Too many pieces of paper. Still have grand, so. Do you have it?
Uh. SP three sixty nine. And four oh nine, is that?
Yes, here I found it, it's twelve ninety one.
Fourteen hundreds, in reference to parking, HB fourteen hundred.
Oh, there you go.
And twelve ninety one.
Parking for residents.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're both, they both, they both be voted on tomorrow.
So it's SB three sixty nine and SB three seventy three. More amendments.
Mm hmm, exactly.
Yeah, you got the same email.
Yep.
That one is, um, the House vote is Thursday, that's the ADU one.
Okay.
And it's the original language from HB twelve ninety one.
Oh, the original.
That's what it says, and then five oh three is. Attaching the language of HB fourteen hundred, that's the parking space mandate.
Yeah.
And that's also the original language from fourteen hundred.
So that's a big vote tomorrow.
That's that one, it looks like Thursday, they're both Thursday.
Oh, Thursday, not tomorrow, okay.
But then down. That's for the representatives, I I don't know, I'm trying to read this and talk at the same time.
Yeah, I was.
This one says the Senate vote's Wednesday, I. It just came from an H.
Oh, thanks.
Maybe we can forward it to Kathy. Attaching the minutes.
Yeah, we'll have to, uh, figure what, have a look at. This language, the last version that I saw. Um, it would have permitted. Detach, detach ADUs by by running and then. Attack, detach ADUs by by running and then second ADU. By conditionally use permanent actual exception.
Right.
amended version. And then the parking bill, I was frankly a little bit um. Confused about because it 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 sets a limit on the maximum. Maximum residential um parking spaces which. Typically municipalities regulate minimums. So I'm not sure how that relates to. How legislation. On maximum limits relates to minimum mandatory minimums that towns usually legislate on, so.
Yeah, I guess, what would be an example of you? You built a detached ADU in a five acre field and you wanted two acres of it to. Thirty five parking spots for some crazy reason.
Yeah, exactly.
So you're you're gonna tell the person that can, I don't know why you want to do that, but you're gonna tell the person they can't have uh. You know, twelve spots or eight spots or.
Or a unit.
Right.
So if you have a four unit house, you're saying, oh, then you need sixteen parking spaces, maybe that says that you can't.
Okay, so I'm interpreting it different.
I I just said, I think the language is confusing, most 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 towns. Regulate the minimum number of spaces and this references the maximum number of spaces, not many. Communities in our state regulate the maximum number of spaces, um so. Um frankly, I'm clear as to whether this would really have a. Big impact with many of our communities.
Right.
Um certainly twelve ninety one would. That would pass, so. Thank you for the. The other, um it's not legislation that is under consideration, this session actually passed last session, but it's uh. It's currently, the program's currently in the rulemaking process, it's uh. It's called the Housing Champions Program through um New Hampshire Department of Business and Economic Affairs. And essentially what the program. Focuses on is it's a voluntary program that towns can choose to participate in. Um and the idea is that you adopt. Local land use regulations that support. Housing opportunity in our state, what that means is, like I said, it's still in rulemaking, so. Um it's unclear what that means in practice, um. But if you adopt. Regulations that support housing flexibility. Then you will become eligible as a community for discretionary grant funding available. Through the state. And what discretionary grant funding that refers to is also still in the rulemaking process, the. Um program itself was allocated five million dollars. During the last legislative session. It's all TBT as far as how that funding is allocated, what eligible uses might be. Whether you could use it for a highway garage or not, I don't know.
If it was just specific to housing, I would think. Small towns like ours, I don't know where that would have a, I could see where Peterborough or. Millford, you know, a small or a larger town that had town sewer. Water that that. Money would be uh be effective. To promote uh. You know, housing growth. Because the town would be able to offset. Some of their infrastructure costs for plumbing, you know, for uh. Sewer and water.
Yeah.
I can't see how a small town like Temple or.
Well, if if the program is modeled off of um. What was referred to as the municipal per unit grant program that was funded through um some. Uh ARPA funding, America, American Recovery Program Act, at this point, I've forgotten my. The the state essentially said, if you, if you as a community. Uh issue permits for housing that meets certain criteria, it was an income threshold that needed to be for. Five years, we will give you ten thousand dollars per unit to use however you want. So in that case, I could see a program like that happening. Fairly broad, like a building, you say, you had a. Orplex that was permitted in town or a townhouse development that.
So the town would benefit from that financially, not the builder or developer.
That's correct. And you know, a town could choose to. Use that funding to help support the development cost, or they could use it for whatever they want. So if the program takes that direction, that could. Be attractive, I would think, to. Numbered types of communities, so. Wanted to flag that as something that's already in law, it's in the rulemaking process, there'll probably be more details.
Good.
That's that's everything I had.
I only have one more thing, and that's the annual meeting in June.
Yeah, no, thank you for reminding me of that, so. Uh the annual meeting or annual annual meeting is uh scheduled for uh June eleventh at five P M. In Keene, um. The focus of the meeting will be. On what we're referring to as as citizen planners, the volunteers in our communities that step up. Serve on planning boards, but also other municipal committees like. CVAs, conservation commissions. Um other ad hoc committees that um focus on. Planning how their community should take shape um in the future. Um and we'll be bringing in uh. At minimum staffer from the Office of Planning Development to talk about resources that. Are available to our member municipalities. And we also might um recruit some some panelists from our member municipalities to showcase some of the innovative work that's. Happening across our region. So again, that's June eleventh and.
So you're gonna be there.
I will be there, yeah. It's at the library.
I used to have those. At ends and and restaurants years ago.
Yes, I went to. We haven't had a sit down dinner, since I started at this convention about six years ago. There will be at least finger foods. Sit down, play at dinner, but. And one of the, one of the things we might talk about at the meeting is whether there was interest and value in. Convening. Multitown conversations among planning boards, uh just uh open up a space for folks to. Talk shop and, you know, it's a. Small group of people that have invested the time and energy to become familiar with. This work and. It could be a good opportunity to commiserate, tell horror stories, um or just to, you know, trade uh. You know, best practices and, you know, I was, this is an issue that's come up in our town, is it come up in your town and how did you deal with it, so. Stay tuned.
I'm curious what you're seeing just sort of across the towns, but you represent, what are the major issues that towns are actually tackling? Is it housing, is it, say, the streets, is it? Preservation, is it recreation? Something different?
Yeah, I mean, housing certainly is really. Issue number one in in many of our communities, um and but balancing that with. Preserving the rural way of life that. People in our region enjoy and move here to. Uh experience, I mean, so finding. Housing solutions that are right sized for each of our communities, so. That union leader article did a good job of summarizing the the wave of activity on the Sunday, going specifically. On this past spring. So I'd say that's number one. Energy is a is another topic that is getting more and more attention, um. Both through um community power aggregation, which I don't know at Temple.
They're looking at it, yeah, our renewable energy committees.
Yeah, so that, um that's actually an area where Southwest has been, we've been pretty active is. Educational um. Presentations to towns on community power, so if that's something. Temple's interested in, we'd certainly be willing to um team up with Banana Sustainability Hub and. Provide a primer on, if that hasn't happened yet.
I think it already has, George, yeah, George was on the.
Okay.
Yeah, and they're already, if something went to legal, so look at, I I read the minute to fly forward, but that's about the extent of it.
So. You know. Figuring out ways to source electricity in a way that's affordable for residents and also gives towns more autonomy and choosing where. Their energy comes from, but also um. You know, thinking about how renewable energy production relates to land use, right? Solar arrays, they take up space and sometimes construction of solar arrays can be in conflict with. Other priorities like. So thinking that from a regulatory standpoint. I see as something that is getting more attention and will probably continue to be. More of a focus area in our communities.
Yeah, so we, Article nineteen of this spring's town meeting, we had the Community Power Plan.
Yeah.
Which we adopted. Under RSA fifty three dash E. Is that, that's what we.
Yeah, I think so, Rob Wills is the chair.
Boy, you're well on your way.
It was along the spectrum at town meeting.
I think the program is is pretty well structured in that um. Really, at the end of the day, it's all about, anyone can opt out of the program if they want to.
That was a lot of the comment that was concerned. No, there was no rock, not.
I I live in Keene and I know when um. The Community Power Plan went into effect in Keene, the rate dropped by about fifteen percent. Of course, then ever source and utility providers that drop their default rate. How much those two things are related to one another, I don't know.
That was another uh meeting, SWR PC meeting, somebody came, the state advocate, right?
The state advocate, yeah.
Chairman spoke about that.
Well, thank you, Todd.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Yeah, and uh. Christine knows how to get ahold of me and and but any issues. Issues come up with this committee or other matters to town.
I'm sure we will, for sure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay. Wow.
The other point I'm making is that. I'm told that. You cannot afford, can cannot enforce. A thirty mile per hour speed limit. Thirty five is the lowest.
Well, so many towns like us have forty mile an hour too.
Yeah. You could, and it's all over the place, thirty mile per hour.
Why is that, George?
Uh, what the police chief, it's the state, I understand. The thirty five is the lowest. You can stop somebody going thirty miles an hour, wait. You can't. Give him a citation and find him.
So, so if I understand correctly, so if you have a thirty mile an hour speed limit zone, like the town is.
I mean, what, thirteen miles?
Thirty, thirty, so you have a thirty mile an hour speed limit.
Right.
The police cannot. Cannot enforce someone going thirty one. But they could enforce someone going thirty six. Does that make sense?
Right, yeah.
Unless you're in a. For a school. I bet there's an exception for schools. No, we stood in school zone. Which exists within. Hundreds of feet of a school.
Okay. So moving on, um. We have two uh lot line adjustments. The first one is for. Uh the Oxtons. Alan and Sue, I believe. And they are, they have a three lot. Um we have a three lot subdivision. Their house being on one of the lots. Currently. And they want to do a lot line adjustment that would. Keep the lot, three lots. Uh but it would increase their their lot where their house is. And I know. So if you look at the uh little uh locus map of the top right hand corner. That shows, and Russ, you can help me with, this is right near wheelhouse, but that shows the current. Um subdivision. Situation.
Right.
So there's um.
Five D forty eight four. Would be joined with parcel A.
So I'm guessing we don't have this electronic. It is on the agenda?
Uh in the other email that has the agenda in it.
So parcel A and parcel B are joining five B forty eight two. And both of the. The original ones are getting reduced. Uh to three acres each.
Three acres, three hundred feet, yeah. Exactly, so you can see where they crossed off the former line.
This would be the old line.
Yes.
And you're selling all this to this lot.
So they're creating one big lot with their house and then two small buildable three acre lots out of the street.
It results in. Five. Forty two, P two. That becomes. Eleven acres.
No, it's twenty.
It becomes twenty point nine six. Resulting in.
Eleven turns into twenty.
I studied it pretty good, I don't know if you did, Russ, and it after you study, I mean, at first glance, I think. It 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 seems to be. Uh all on the surface, all of. It all makes sense.
Yeah, this makes a lot of sense.
It's an optus on the top, yeah.
I just couldn't get the math to work out and I. I I came up with nineteen point nine seven for the new lot.
It's still a twenty point nine six.
Yeah, and I think the issue was forty eight three, it's going eleven point oh one. But on the.
Is gonna get added to this.
Yeah, maybe it's the other one. One of them is showing um. Showing both of these as eleven acres, eleven point oh one, yeah, two is eleven point oh one.
So they're not.
Well, the tax map says ten oh two, again, I guess the survey is correct and that their math.
Once again, the tax map.
Our tax map is incorrect, because I couldn't find any previous surveys.
So the end result. I guess for. You know, for preliminary approval. To move forward, the end result is um. What? Seems to be okay, which would be that we're creating two, three. Seems to be okay, which would be that we're, that is creating two three acre lots. With the three hundred meter frontage.
Yeah.
With the two hundred fifty foot square, with this well radius, and with the test pit. Uh, Doug. Right, Russ?
Yeah, and there's, like, when I looked at it, I didn't see anything. And I found little stuff that. Like, the big lot, uh, forty-eight dash two, doesn't have the two hundred fifty foot square on it. Doesn't have any setbacks on it, and it doesn't show the leach field.
Yeah.
And it's like, well, that's. Yeah.
Oh.
And they should, those of you who think they're in their end.
Yeah, so we, we would just waive it because we know you could fit ten, two hundred fifty foot squares on that. It's already there, yeah.
You can obviously get it.
Yeah, that's what he's gonna keep.
Okay.
And then foliage lines, don't really, I mean. I mean, but it says you're supposed to show them.
And he did submit an application, right?
Uh, do we do, uh?
And he didn't ask for any waivers?
No waivers, they checked all the butters, that was right, I didn't know about themes.
Yeah, yeah, I remember, I looked at it when it came in, I didn't bring it.
And it says that, that, with N H D S, uh, is pending. Cause they'll need a. Uh, lot three.
So I did contact Meridian. And. Offered for them to come in. Tonight. For, cause they're representing both Quinn and Oxman.
Sam Ingram.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, but I think, you know, they, I told them that if everything went well, that. The board would probably pull up to a preliminary vote. And set, uh, hearing date for our second meeting in June. Provided that nothing jumped out of, so. You know, it's gonna put a snag in that. But I figured we'd just talk about them individually, you know, we'll take.
So she removed to accept the application.
Well, we don't wanna accept it as complete yet, cause then our sixty day. And the applicant's not here.
Also, this is just preliminary, gets the talent, and okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, well, we have, uh. Post fifteen days prior to the hearing, so we.
Right.
We need to, we need to make a decision tonight to do that, because there will, there will be a lot of time. After our first meeting in June, build a move zone. Right?
Yes. Well, I mean, where we have the application, but the only thing is if any changes are gonna be made to the plan based on what we've talked tonight. Those would have to be in by. The Monday before our next meeting, which I think is. I wrote it down, June third would be the date, if there's gonna be any revisions. That would be fifteen days before the second meeting in June.
So when you hear the question I had, and, not to do with this plan, but in general. Cause you said, you'd like me to review these, do I do that? Do I tell them that, or?
I'm assuming you would, but.
I wanna know what the project, what am I responsible to do, what are the process? Cause I'm happy to, like, email and say, these are the things we all talked about and saw, please get a plan and buy. I don't wanna miss it, because that is a false movement.
Well, no, I.
Assuming you're doing, but.
Yeah, I'm okay with you, I just think that, well. Somebody should be noted, we should be in the loop, whether it's Christine or myself.
Let me have everybody and just.
Or you could do that. The whole board, I guess, I don't, it doesn't have to be just the chairperson.
Yeah, it's up to you, I think the way I did it, and you could do it however you want, but it's, when I would send an email like that, I just printed it and put it in the file. So it's in the official record. Um, you know, for the file that's kept down at the office.
Now, why do you do anything, do you want, just like, do I set up the notification?
There's, those, all the letters have to be created and I have a template I can send you.
So that.
Yeah.
All these.
Yeah.
But I'm happy to go through the process with you.
Okay, so there's all this.
The labels, then there's a letter that.
I'm not sure what, how.
And then.
What should I do or not?
Um, so I would go down to the office and do the, there's cards, there's, you know, and do the certified mail thing.
Yeah.
And then sometimes Carol will take it to the post office, cause she's going anyway, but some, I, I was doing it, cause then they give you the stamp.
This one, I can come over and do it together?
Yeah, we'll do it together.
Now, I think going way back. Not that I'm saying that Kathy, or, would do this, but Betsy used to do this.
Yes.
Uh.
I'll, I'll walk you through the process.
That's why there's very few people that know how to. You know, you, when you were the, Betsy did it.
And I figured.
I did, I remember doing it back in the nineties. I remember these labels and it was, you know, literally typewriter.
Oh, yeah.
My goodness, I do it from the other.
Yeah.
So, so tonight I need to hand this to Russ.
Yes, I would hand it to Russ and he'll take it from there and then we can communicate.
Okay. So do we, besides, and I'm, and I'm okay with waiving the two fifty square on that large parcel, if, if it means that's the only change. If there was more, then I guess.
I think.
Beachfield and building setbacks.
Yeah.
I mean, there's two leach field, the two test pits in there.
Right, those are on the proposals, but on the existing, there's no leach field, you have rail, but, and there's no well radius.
There's no issue with the pond.
And.
Pond's gonna be.
It's, you know, just cause it's close to the, I mean, the lot lets, the existing lot line anyway, right?
So we, I guess. Is it more just, I think, the reasoning, I'm just thinking.
Yeah.
The, the house is, the house was built in the eighties, that they live in there.
Yeah.
All these years, they obviously have a septic system, a town approved, state approved septic system. But, I mean, how, what, is it set a bad precedent if we don't have them?
I think.
Put that on there?
At least there's one, and. Or somebody says it's. So, we don't find out after this difference, really, there's just pipe one into the pot.
The other, the other thing I, I used to do was also talk to Pete Caswell, cause he's gonna sign off on this.
Yeah.
So I usually call them ahead of time, just to give them a heads up and ask if there was anything that he was aware of.
Yeah. Cause they don't.
Good to have none, we should request that.
I think I should.
So we might as well do the two fifty square while we're on it.
But it's gonna take all the ten minutes.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're gonna make that phone call?
Yeah. Well, the other, Sam just put these on, and it's no problem, everything else is good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the other thing to look, look, we're just looking at the list of things that should be on the preliminary layout, now I'm looking at the subdivision. Online, we lock down the.
Yeah.
Um.
I use both to check.
Yeah. So, existing driveways to that house.
Oh, good point.
Both beyond, that was preliminary locations and readings and proposed.
The existing ones for sure should be on there, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause the only break in that stone wall is at the iron pin between the two lots.
Does it propose, like, a driveway or just the driveway location, like, we're saying this is where the curb.
Yeah, so, so existing driveways. Are required.
Yeah.
Plus preliminary locations and reading of proposed driveways, basically to make sure they're feasible.
Okay.
So, for example, on the middle lot. Not that you have to go along with, with rock wall, existing rock wall, but one driveway would come over the test pit.
Yeah.
The other one looks like, you know, but the one that probably pay attention to is if the existing driveway is at the iron pin. Between the two lot lines. To the existing houses, is there a driveway to lot line setback that is required? Man. And I think we currently say ten feet. That would be one of the new driveway regulation system.
I know, I, I.
So my guess is it comes in. Those are contiguous. Stone wall.
Yeah.
So it probably comes in.
That, I guess that's also part of the, uh, all the natural features, location. Tree line, and other stuff, all that shit. They're on, uh, state line coordinates and they can get it from the hand to grant it.
Yeah.
So where do we stand with, uh, the list at the moment, Russ, for requests for?
Uh, the septic, the leach field for the existing house. The, uh, two fifty foot square. Uh, setbacks on that same lot, existing driveway. Uh, preliminary locations for the two, um, three acre lots.
For, for driveway.
For driveway, and I think it's verified that. This, the, the big lot, the twenty acre lot, the driveway needs set that requirements, which I, I'm wondering, there's already line there. I mean, it's, it's kinked over a little bit.
Yeah.
But at the curb cut.
It's like the same location.
Same location, so if the driveway was there, I don't think it'd make the move in. But, yeah.
But if for some reason it ran over the.
Yeah, the main line, right, I think that's in there or something, right?
Then. They might, they might choose a different layout.
Yeah.
Anybody have anything else? Jumps out on them.
I'm good.
Did you, uh, go online to find it, Jim?
Yeah, I did. Now, I'm looking at it, trying to interpret, what, uh, I do have a question, the two hundred fifty square, what is that for?
The reason why we adopted the two hundred fifty foot square in Temple, uh, years ago in our zoning. Was simply to avoid bowling alley lots.
Okay, so, so when you're saying two hundred fifty foot square, it's two hundred fifty, uh, uh, essentially a radius from the, around the house?
No, it's on the, on the building lot. You have to have a two hundred and fifty foot square between the.
I got it.
A poster child for why we adopted the law, you wanna look on, at, where Russ lives and all his neighbors. Down on the Sharon Line on West Road. And that, probably eighties, I think that went in the eighties.
Yeah.
Ish. Um, you look at those, those lots and they're very narrow, very long, and it was just a way for the developer to. To make it work, but it, it, it's Temple voted that that's not what they want in our town, so.
Yeah.
We adopted this somewhere back in the day, we adopted this two hundred fifty foot square to alleviate that.
Understood.
I don't know.
But it doesn't have, but according to this, assuming this is correct, it doesn't have to be two hundred fifty foot square inside the septic. It's just inside the.
In the property lines, right, that's right, yeah. Okay, well, if nobody has anything else, yeah, I guess we can. Bust those with.
I have to listen to what we would do and.
So do you need a motion then to, um. Schedule.
For the hearing? Yes, yes, I do.
For. June eighteenth pending receipt of, they requested.
It sounds like you just made that motion.
Plan, a revised plan.
Yeah, I'll second that.
By June third. Did you get that, Kathy?
And who posts, this, I guess Kathy posts?
Nope, um, well, I mean, no, not typically, I did that too.
You did that too?
Yep. Yeah, I have a template, I just update.
And it is June.
And he'll need to bring checks as well, once we figure out. How much it'll be.
June eighteenth, right, this is the hearing day.
Uh, June eighteenth. And so letters to butters will have to be known by you.
We, uh.
We didn't, did we vote? I don't really vote.
Oh, yeah, we should probably vote, yes, Carter, hurry vote.
Yes.
I vote yes.
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 Yes. Good, good.
Yes.
Do we, um. Do one of us keep, should I keep a copy of this, just for my?
I mean, you can, I, I literally have a stack of them, old ones still at my house that I'm taking to drop off.
I'll just, here, we just do it all.
That guy was great, cause he's like, I'll take all the extras, so I gave him all my extras.
So these are.
Those are options, I mean, you, let's, now this is mine.
Oh, okay.
So do you have the Quinn?
Um, yeah, but you, so you kept a copy?
I did.
Okay.
I did, just. Cause my bad eyes.
All right. So now. The Quinn subdivision.
Which we don't have an application for.
We do. Yeah, we're here.
Didn't get an electronic.
Oh, okay, yeah, we have all the labels, uh. Warranty deed.
Oh, the deed is in there too?
Yeah, and, and a, and a check.
And a check even.
Yeah, so, there you go.
So that was one of my questions with the deed for the flood easement, is that what you have?
Um, I haven't read the deed yet.
Okay.
So this is for James W. Quinn. So everybody knows where this is, this is down on Commerce Road. Uh, right up one oh one, next to the. Famous Powers Bridge. Yeah, still with a rich closed side of.
Conversations happening about.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't know about the P's, but the butters list, I didn't know they'd submit any waivers.
There you go.
The N H D S, they say that, pending, so. That's, that's okay, they don't have a place to repeat the sign on this one. Um, so they'll need that. And I think. One of the requirements for the subdivision is that they're supposed to go all drainage well. Uh, standing water on a thousand feet of the lot. I think that should be waived. Again, we should, yeah.
The only thing is there is a flood rate easement for this?
Yeah.
So, did you get the, a copy of that?
But I think the easement is fine after that.
Okay, well, I didn't see anything on, um, one of the notes on here. From the previous plan. Um, which was in twenty nineteen, when they got sort of this triangle piece.
Yeah.
Um, refers to. Um, let me find that. It's, I think, number eleven?
Set this piece right here.
Yep, so. I've got a note.
No, they're not eleven, it's, lists the easement.
Yep.
Yeah.
Subject to an easement to benefit the New Hampshire Water Resources Board, this is from the twenty nineteen survey. And it's, uh, note number ten, and that's four oh two six four, that man that's referenced. And it said flood rate limits shown are based on plan reference number four, detailed topographic survey of the site. Will be required for definitive location of the limits. So I, I didn't know if there were limits. On the plan.
This plan.
This plan.
They're showing a contour that is dulling it.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Uh, it wasn't labeled as far as I can tell?
It's good, yeah, it is, it's just, it's kind, some of the stuff is hidden, like, there's soils lines, there's these little tiny spines that is, the limits of flood. Is labeled kind of in the middle by that.
What is that? I see, okay, I was looking over here on the new lot, because that's where the brook is.
It's hard to tell, cause the line tape, it's kind of the same as.
So it kind of cuts. If I'm looking at this, it does cut through. The, that new lot.
Yeah.
Um, close to that well.
Yeah.
So I don't, I guess I defer to your judgment, that, that, this was a tricky one for me, cause of this.
The flood limit is about eight to ten feet downhill.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I could see that it was the slope, but.
So we've got, I think, the well plenty of elevation.
Okay.
That's not gonna do it. The test pits, but presumably where their house is, we're here from top to hill.
Yeah, right.
Is well away from this.
Right. This was the well within that.
Yeah. Yeah.
That area that was seemed kind of close to me, but it's not my area of expertise.
How is um the easement handled here? Cuz there's, they've got something that. Because it's a shared driveway that they're providing that, right?
Yeah, that would be one of the.
How is that?
It's not.
So how it says something that? We are deciding upon it, okay?
What does it say in our driveway reg exactly?
Yeah, there are rules around shared drive.
They're permitted, uh but they have to be approved. By the planning board. Or the planning, the road agent, but the planning board has to.
Yeah, the road agent has to sign off.
Right.
Yeah, then we have several of them. Around town, they all had to be.
Yeah, but the driveways should be on there.
Yeah, I think that's.
Yeah, but there's, it doesn't need to be labeled. But that's for the. Doesn't show where. I I did read the um. If it's like says, the state has the right to come in. And do something or do something further down the line, there are some.
So there's a couple.
Yeah, that's not on the map, but there's like a. Yeah. Right, so you have.
And just set everything up.
Yeah.
Under easements.
Or is it the state or is it the? Is it a federal agency?
Separate driveways, common driver.
Which no longer exists, yeah.
Do we wanna read it out?
Wouldn't it be the dam's bureau now, probably would be sort of overseeing that.
I don't know.
They're under D E.
Okay. You have an update on the driveway thing?
So we have in our driver regulation section, time, thoughts about common driveways. Um common driveways will be permitted. Where terrain or drainage conditions make individual driveways impractical. The common driveway, the common portion shall have a cleared width of twenty feet. And be gravelled at least sixteen feet wide. And as a definition, basically the common pieces where up to the point at which the driveway splits. Should the common portion of the driveway extend further than the right of way line? Which means, I assume means right of way of the road. The. Planning board will require legal easements to be submitted along with the driveway permit application for review by town council. At the applicant's expense. And that document of that easement shall include maintenance of the driveway. Procedures. Let me ensure that remain accessible to emergency vehicles and that the responsibility for such condition of. Lot ownerships shall run with the land. This is section nine of the current. Um current driveway regs, I didn't comment right. You might wanna read this, make sure we have all that information.
I mean, he won't be able to provide, he can provide language.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, so the easement has to come with the driveway permit. Application.
So there's still time for that?
Yep. It says you, you can't. Create the common driveway until you get a permit from the town that requires the review of that easement. Because basically you've got a driveway on lot A.
Right.
And that, this is suggesting or requiring that law. The driveway, which is on lot A. Otherwise, I could just block it off.
Okay.
And not give you access to your driveway if that easement's like that. Yeah, cuz who's to say that families gonna always live?
It's interesting, because that would make it sound like you have to have an improved lot first. So that you can have easement on one to.
Right.
But so this is more than, when you wanna create, when you want a building permit for that new house. That's gonna make use of a common portion of an existing driveway. There needs to be an easement provided for you to have access to that common portion.
So it would be almost a given that it's going to be. From our can.
Yeah.
Seeing this, because if it couldn't be approved, all of a sudden, it's just a terrible place for a driveway, and all of a sudden, this lot has no driveway.
Right.
And.
Yeah, unless there's another.
Condition of approval, to, you know.
Unless there's another way into that lot and you have to go. Further up Powers Road, it looks much flatter, but it could be wetter.
We've had a history of problems with shared driveways.
Yeah.
I think every shared driveway.
So do we have, I know there's there. Words in one of the documents, and I didn't find it in the subdivision document just now, it might be in our master plan. That the town is trying not to create back lots.
Mm-hmm.
So the narrow strip of land that puts a house behind a house. Is that what's being created here?
No.
No.
No, it's got all the front edge, it's just.
What has the, it has the three hundred foot front edge?
Yeah.
Um.
It's multiple numbers, you have to add up.
Yeah.
The two for.
But the existing house is in front of most of the part of the zone. Okay, so there isn't. There isn't a requirement for frontage where the driveway accesses. Cuz they're looking for a driveway that accesses off of Powers Road. And lot eight four has about a hundred and fifty, no, I'm sorry, two hundred and fifty feet of frontage on Powers Road.
That you, are you saying that that lot then? Three hundred feet, and is it supposed to be the red frontage on the road you're driving?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't.
I I don't think it.
I don't think it does, I just wanted, yeah.
Yeah, I'd be interested.
So, yeah, so it wouldn't work if there's a property in here.
Right, right, no, it wouldn't work, yeah. The other issue is this is not a square rectangular lot, it's a triangle. Right. Which is also one of our requirements, that it's. Where a rectangular, not, not an odd shape. I don't know how to keep it otherwise, I mean, I mean, I don't know if this is.
Right, cuz it has an existing, uh something we waive, or is it?
Well, I don't know why, I mean, if you hit the two fifty square. So I don't know why we wouldn't allow somebody to make a triangular lot.
Just cuz it's one of our requirements.
We don't allow triangular lot?
That we, we want square rectangular.
Rectangle lots, yeah, so I guess we'd have to wait.
Well, that's what it says in our zoning, George.
Yeah. What, it has to be rectangular lot?
I didn't know if it uses the word.
I didn't know that.
Does it say on the checklist?
Yeah. That's why you kinda got me.
I didn't make that requirement, George.
Well, if it is, then we can, we can entertain waving, obviously, like Christine said.
Yeah, exactly.
So it says.
I see why they're doing it that way, and I mean, I don't know how else they would do it, but.
So in our subdivision regulations.
I didn't.
Yep.
Thank you.
Subdivision Regulation Section four point oh four. Lot layout. And I'm, oops, sorry, that's, yes, side lot lines shall generally. Be at right angles to straight street lines. Or radial to a curved street line, so basically, you have a. Street. That you would normally want a side lot line that comes off from particular to.
Yeah.
Not at a forty five degree angle and a forty five degree angle. Is how this, how our subdivision regulations are. Generally, using the word generally.
That's true.
Yeah. Yeah, I think so, that's what we know, that's generally what we're looking for.
Yeah.
So generally, yeah, it's a suggestion.
Yeah.
I didn't know that was in there.
No, and I had to do the. Legal document after that goes with the notice of decision, you have to take every single one of those items and say whether it meets that.
Me too.
That's why, that's why it stuck out in my head.
So because this is one lot. That doesn't. Comply, if you had like ten lots and nine complied and one just didn't fit, generally kind of fits.
Right.
We may need some wording or verbiage on. This is the only practical way that we see to create this, but that's our judgment, I don't know if we're gonna be allowed to make that judgment or not.
I would say we should just. Since it, it looks obvious, I mean, I think if you really wanted. You could probably do something rectangular, but it would be a fairly unuseful, it would be narrow and stupid.
Yeah, you'd be, your road frontage would be one oh one.
Yeah.
Right, right.
The driveway would cross both lots.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. So I think that's just what we put in the um. You know, when we do the notice of decision, it's why we waived it.
Yeah, we asked them to.
If it has to.
It doesn't.
It doesn't, it's generally.
I know the, I'm always trying to get to some towns. And every item, if you don't have a waiver written out in words, no, master waiver, come back. And then other towns like waive anything if you just have a reason.
Yeah.
Right at the meeting, so I I don't know, I don't.
I mean, if you wanna err on the side of caution, you can tell them to ask for a waiver and.
And so that's what we all talk about.
Nobody, I don't think anybody here, sitting here tonight, is gonna dispute it. So, you know, it's a. I just think it's a matter of documenting that we, that we discussed it with the applicant.
Yeah.
Right.
Thought that this was the best way forward.
Okay.
Yeah. I would document it, yeah, yeah. Cuz they might not even know that they're.
Yeah.
Um Russ, just going back to the driveway thing, what what exactly are we telling them on the driveway?
That uh they should read section nine, the driveway regulations regarding common driveways and make sure that.
They're compliant with.
Or plan to be compliant. And is Meridian gonna help them with that, is that? Yeah.
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 Sam Ingram is the one. Uh who's did he do, Shelley's, Shelley guys. Yeah, yeah.
Give them your money and age.
Yeah, so yeah, so Jim, Jim isn't gonna go, go down to the office and tell, he, Bernie's gonna do a phone.
Select ward signing the building permit, so they would make sure there's a driveway permit right at that time. What's the process?
For a driveway.
For the driveway, is it come before or after the building permit?
After, this is expected.
Right.
But when you, when you, the building permit process, the driveway's on the permit, it's part of the process, Ken Perry has to sign on. It's like he has what, he does what to sign up for the subject. The order just signs up on the driveway.
Just trying to understand the process.
Yeah, well, no, it's not every day we do a common driveway.
These four guys lived in this town for seventy years. He's handicapped. And he's just trying to provide a lot for his son in law.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're all.
Yeah.
Is that it then? So shared driveway, maybe waiver or just discuss why it's a triangle.
Yeah, I think, I think it's just a matter of of documenting it, so, you know, a future, future, somebody doesn't question.
Right.
The validity of the subdivision and therefore the building can't exist, we don't, we don't want that to. Yeah, to, to.
Just protect.
Right, for future. It's really protecting, it's true.
The other one I had, there's in the regulations, there's supposed to be a statement with a lot as suitable for residential development. Well, is that a statement that goes on the plan, is that just a letter?
Well, so we, I.
What we, what do we ask?
Yeah, so, so when I do the notice of decision, there's that document, that legal document that goes with it, which just checks off all the items.
Yeah.
And so I just put in a statement in that, if we, the planning board has determined it is.
The reason.
With the, that it's suitable for development. That's how I've been doing it.
So I, I just have a quick question, why, why do they have to have a shared driveway, doesn't this property have all kinds of frontage on Powers Road?
It's all steep.
Really steep.
Okay. Because it's so steep, okay.
Yeah, look at the contour lines, if you can see them.
Nice.
Just past the shared driveway location, just north of that.
Yeah, I see the, the train lines, I just didn't put that together, okay.
It's the findings of fact document, that's the one, I'm trying to remember the official name of it, it goes with. Yeah, so that would address these other issues. Yeah, I, the only thing I had, like I said, was flood rates thing, but the driveway is awesome.
Well, so I guess the key would be to, it's all timing now, right, to make sure that. Everything can happen to be able to meet the deadline for. Posting on time to have the hearing, that, we'd have both Oxman and, hearing's the same night. In June, cuz we're not, the plan is we're not gonna meet again till the end of July.
Okay.
We're not meeting the first, cuz it's fourth of July week, so it would, it would be a shame to.
Unless we have a.
Well, I, I personally won't be here, I'm gonna be on vacation that first week of July, but uh, yeah, it's like July second.
Second week if we have.
We could, we could post another special meeting, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh but we're not, so it'd be, it would be nice to be able to have the hearings, you know, the great to do.
Right.
Not to worry about pushing them out till. End of July or having a special meeting and.
Right.
After fourth of July.
It should be, both easy plans, Sam will be here for both, so it's not like we're having a bunch of people.
Yeah.
Right.
Saves both of them money if he's here one night, so to. It's all, just making sure we post things uh in the. So it's gonna.
Yeah, oh yeah.
The newspaper.
It would be two ads, two sets of letters.
Yeah, so is that.
We'll just do it all, yeah.
Can't you, we see sometimes do two public, two hearings in one.
Oh, yeah, they can do.
Oh.
A whole bunch. I've heard horror stories of planning board meetings going until eleven at night, so.
What do you mean, in the end you said two ads?
Two separate ads, one hearing for, because they pay for the ad.
Okay.
So I mean, they could probably put it in one box, but it has to be two notices.
Yes, one for Quinn, one for Oxman.
Yeah. And they charge by the word, so I'm trying to get it down to.
Yeah. Need a motion to, and a second to vote on this subdivision.
So you want a motion to schedule the hearing for June eighteenth?
Mm-hmm.
Ending receipt of the revised plan? Um, by June third. Second for Quinn. Second.
Carter already wrote.
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
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 Perfect. Thank you. Okay. Good. There's. Even newer.
So just another note on uh when the tax map is also incorrect. It didn't take into account the twenty nineteen.
Isn't that?
It was a lot line adjustment, but.
Amazing that they could be all could be awesome. What did we do for years just?
That well, the good news in that case is the tax card was correct. But the other one, the tax card was incorrect, so it's. It was an acre. Current current uses.
Well, if you if you were ten acres of land your whole life and you were paying taxes on it, and then you found out you went eleven, it could have been a current use, you'd be pretty upset.
Well, the Oxman, that that has never been surveyed. It was just deeds, but the other one had been surveyed, so I don't know why the tax map, it just didn't make it onto the list of updates, and that was after Betsy left, so. Sure, that's. It was just one of those things. Fell through the cracks. I'm gonna get to that. If I know what I know, we're pushing on nine.
Yeah, I know.
I have a few things.
Just gonna say what what we want to pass over. For this meeting and what we should be definitely talk about because it is almost nine o'clock, so.
Well, I have zoning ordinance stuff for people to review.
Yeah.
To take. You don't have to talk about it right now. It's just to take with you.
Good.
And then um the tax map stuff, which.
I did. I wasn't known to do.
Yeah. Again, we can talk offline, but I did I do have a list going of what needs to get updated, so. We got an email from Carol in the office that there were two other lots.
Saw that email.
That were incorrect, so they're on the list. And then Alan Pickmans has didn't make it in in time for the last. Um, list, and then there was that orphan lot, which we're still waiting to hear. Yeah, what happened on the row subdivision. There's the email, which you I don't know if you want this or not, but. Um, so Keith created a spreadsheet. And it's on a shared Google Drive. So. You can we can share that. I don't know if he gave either of us editing. I tried to add those and I I wasn't allowed, so I don't know if he gave you editing. Cause I remember emailing and saying Russ is taking over the tax map stuff, so we just need to follow up with Keith.
And. So if there's now one way to fixing the tax now?
No, we're just making a list.
Of wrong things.
Of wrong things, and then the next time we do tax map updates, we send it to whoever we. We were, I think it was happening less, like every two years, two to three years, um, but.
We talked about the G I S.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah. So there's list, and then I'm assuming these two will be added. So it's just a matter of keeping the list current until we're ready to do the updates.
Should we all have a copy of that?
Yeah, I mean, it's on a shared Google Drive, so. Yes. Yeah. And I didn't know if that's something like we wanted to give Kathy. Access to keeping the list. Current I it's.
I think we should.
Yeah. So just. I didn't want to put more on your plate, but it's a really minor thing. It's just. Well, and if we talk about Dropbox, if we want to.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I think that would make sense. And then, you know, people will know we're keeping track of. Then it's not just in one person. Exactly. Yeah. Yep. And everybody knows how to do it. So uh zoning ordinance updates, so I did divide it up into six packets. And there's five of you here, so. Oh, Jim, Jim, I'll have to get you one. So I don't know if you have preferences for sections, how you wanna divide it up, but. Um, I tried to do it like a dozen pages each. But that didn't always work out because there were sections that were longer and some that were shorter. So do you want me to just randomly hand them out, or do you? The smallest isn't necessarily the easiest. I'll tell you that. I mean, you can just take a packet. Whichever one you want. And then. Oh, George got the fat one there.
And so six goes to the gym.
We'll go to Jim. Um. And then the first couple pages are just the format that I tried to follow. And then um. Then I know there are some sections that don't follow that format, and that's highlighted in that second part of this cover sheet. And then there's. Whole bunch of places that reference other sections in the zoning ordinance, so we just want to make sure if I'm if we're changing any labels. That we change the references to those sections. Does that make sense?
So give me an example.
So for example, um, well, I have the packet six, so in the Village. Historic District, it refers to permitted use as the first article four, section seven, which is the multifamily and ADU section of our zoning. If we ended up changing, for example, section seven to some other number. You know, we'd have to make sure we updated the districts and uses to whatever that new number is.
So like my my here, I have section eight manufactured housing.
Yep.
So I'm gonna go into our zoning. And I'm gonna review that whole section for. Article four, section eight.
So you're gonna review it for this formatting, make sure it's consistent with the standard formatting.
Okay.
And um you have. Do you have the ADU? Well, I'm just trying to see. Eight, nine, uh, yeah. Seventeen, so you it looks like you don't have anything that isn't. Compliant with. The format, so you're okay, but this refers to some other sections that you'll just want.
So it's all about the formatting and and making sure that it's consistent.
Yeah, it's just the formatting and the cross referencing.
Okay.
And then, you know, if you have one of those sections that doesn't follow that standard. Make a recommendation on whether or not we should change it or whether it's fine the way it is.
Okay.
And then I also have the table of contents, which we can look at separately. I don't know if anybody wants to look at that and. For example, um. The small wind energy system is section twenty five, and then it goes workforce housing, and then it goes to large wind energy systems.
Crazy.
Should they be together? Like, I feel like workforce housing could probably go after planned residential development. That's just that kind of stuff. The order of the document could be changed to make.
So do we? Can we get? Copies of that is.
Yes. Do you want to take that one?
I'll take this one, but shouldn't everybody have?
Well, the I mean, you can if you want, or we can revisit it. You can make recommendations, but we can talk about it.
All right. Yeah, that one. Well, that's a blatant one right there.
That's pretty obvious.
Yeah, pretty obvious.
Right, right. And I think the lawyer also said, you know, like our last section, our last article is um. It's like. Telecommunications and something. Which comes after administration and like.
But there's things we can add like.
Does it make sense for it to be there? I maybe it does. I don't know. Maybe administration should be further up in the document. And you know, that districts and uses section that we've talked about is way back on like page sixty two. Whereas it's probably something if someone is looking to see what's allowed, it probably should be at the beginning of the document. For quick rest, so just those kinds of things. And then the math, of course, also is from like nineteen seventy two. Actually, I think it's more recent than that, but. We'll have we'll get something.
A lot of the ADU section of it is something.
Yeah, that doesn't conform to the standard that. The other sections conform to. So you can call me or email me or whatever if you have questions when you're going through it. So just to check and confirm, so we're reviewing for formatting and cross referencing and against. The existing zoning ordinance, which is online. Yeah, I. Yep, which I didn't, so I didn't print it.
Okay, so I'm gonna do.
Yeah, and I. And I'm happy to send you this electronically, your section, if you want, if you prefer an electronic section. I I worked better with paper. But it's whatever is easier for you. You want. Does you guys want to tell me what sections you have, or it doesn't matter? I think it's a four. Or you want a number. It's on my chair. I have three. You have.
Uh.
One.
Yes, what number? Yeah, you called it number ones, yes.
So you. Yeah.
Jim's gonna get six.
And Ross has five. And Jim will get six. So that's the end. The last part.
And I'm fine with that being electronic.
Okay, I'll send you an electronic version then.
Sure.
All right. Now trying to cruise through here. I I think I mentioned earlier the N R I, um, Jeff said he'd be done by the end of the month. Send that same with the mapping. We've already talked about tax maps. Don't mind if I just breathe through the. Um, half grant, did you have anything? Nothing. Other than what we we're meeting one final time in a couple of weeks, and we will present. A recommendation to planning board. Um, so I think we'll probably have to find time at a future summer meeting. For Pam to come and speak to us. Okay, so um I Carol will also have something, and then they'll be done. Right. By June, so I guess if we're waiting until July to meet. We just have to use Carol's hours before July.
It would be that's the end of July meeting. Cause we're not gonna we're not gonna.
I mean, we have to pay her before the end of July, so. We don't. I I don't think at that point we need Carol. So I, yeah, so I think she. Okay. Will be done before that, is that? I haven't been communicating. I just had the one email, just, you know, just asking her if she'd heard from Jeff, because I hadn't heard from them, and she said she'd also messaged him, and he was it turned out he was away, but. Um. And then he did respond and say he'd be done by the end of the month, and Carol said the same thing. She'd like to be done by the end of the month.
Of June.
May. Yeah. Yeah. So that then there's June to react, I guess, if there's any changes that need to be made. Yeah, I don't think we're anticipating anything because we're just waiting on. That the watershed thing. Which um, let me see, the regional impact, let me just quickly talk about that. There was an article on the ledger. About it, actually. Um, so they approved the uh yield plan for twenty nine units. So they will have the next hearing on March. Not March, sorry. I'm starting to wilt here. Uh, I did write it down. June fifth. June fifth. Will be the next hearing, and they are going to include the traffic study. I understand it's already in process, but applicant has already started working on that because they knew it had been asked for by us. Um, so there was.
In today's ledger or previous?
Yes, today's. Twenty nine.
Yeah.
Should somebody go to that? Evening.
I mean, I've been going, but if somebody else wants to go, feel free.
It's a it's uh Wednesday night.
Yeah.
So who's a free? I'm I'm not on Wednesday nights. That's my volume.
I mean, I'm I can keep going, but I it's it's I've learned a lot, so if anyone's interested in seeing the process in action for a cluster development, it is really interesting. So there's that, which is of course right after our planning board meeting the night before, so. Uh, let's see. Okay. I wouldn't that I guess the two last things, one is the recordings are all available for the spring planning and zoning conference. I watched a couple of sessions. The first one was really dry, to be honest. That was about infill development. I didn't make it through to the end, being honest. Um, but then the other was another one about um towns that have been working through the hop grant through all three phases, and that one was interesting. I just didn't get finished it. I ran out. So. Um, those are all free and online. On YouTube. And then the last thing is I got an email from Pam Lockwood, who are representative to the South Eagan Water Shed. Conservation, protection, some. Something or center. I don't know what it's called, but she is our representative, and they sent a survey, and a lot of the questions here are planning board. Questions, and I don't know if anybody had an interest in working with Cam on responding to this. You're welcome to, or I can do it. As well. Do any monitor. I didn't seem more up your alley, but I feel like you have a lot on your plate already.
There, there it is.
You can take a look at it. It's what's in your master plan and what's in your zoning ordinance is it's kind of specific. And Cam knows some of the answers. Yeah, and it should only take a few minutes, but. Okay, I will let Cam know then.
So Kathy uh did some homework on the Dropbox. And I don't know if you want to talk about that. I printed out here. Pricing here that.
Yeah, basically. I mean. The the personal plan makes me a little bit nervous, even though it's it probably. Personal planet, two terabytes, the business planet, three terabytes, but that. On of data. Um, either way, um. Trying to remember what they're.
Yeah, it's nine ninety nine a month. Build yearly hundred and twenty dollars.
Right, and the other one is is sixteen cents in a month.
Yeah, hundred hundred ninety nine yearly.
So. As long as we're okay with one person logging in, and I have no problem having it be a generic planning board account, and everyone can have the password, so if someone, you know, if I'm. Unable to upload something or something, you know, you all would be able to log in, upload things, um. And then we can share documents, you know, well, basically, once we upload a document, there'll be a link. We can put the links right in our. Agendas, right in our meeting minutes, so that people can go, you know, anyone reading can go and and look at the documents. There were. There was just one question about. Um, and I'm. The, do we want to restrict anyone from being able to download these files? I think they should. Would be able to.
They should be able to. Yeah.
Um, that was just one of the differences. The personal plan didn't allow you to restrict downloads, but as long as we don't need to do that.
Did you talk to the woman in New Ipswich that manages their?
I did not. I did not. I just went to Dropbox first to ask what their options were. They didn't say they had anything, but I can certainly follow up.
Maybe ask her what they do.
Okay, yeah.
I would recommend the business. So the business plan, you want more than one user. It's fifteen dollars a month per user, so it'll be three hundred and sixty dollars a year.
Okay.
But I mean, for us, it's not like you're gonna be two of us needing to log in and upload at the same time. I think we can handle.
I think we can handle the one user because. I mean, we're just asking you to do what you're already doing, but but somewhere we can access it, so I think it's. Fine if there's one user user, but I agree with Jim. It shouldn't be a personal account. It should be the like essentials.
So the essential plan is considered a business one?
It is, yeah, it's called.
Yeah, so that's two hundred dollars a year.
Yeah, that's that's what I was thinking is the two hundred dollar one.
So are we? Do we need to? Think about it or start talking about it more or vote up?
Do you want me to check on it with the New Ipswich folks first?
Yeah, because I would just want to make sure, like, if we're gonna put it on the agenda, then people are gonna click on it, and I want to make sure they can open the files, like, like that's.
Well, then you just need to like that too, when you go.
Yeah.
The name of your uh application, you click on it.
Right. Right.
Right, it's just the users that can access.
To put stuff on.
In there.
Yeah. That's, that's fine.
So I would, I would have that on the agenda for the next. Next meeting, cause our next meeting, we don't have the hearings. For, for agenda, so I'm assuming we're gonna discuss this. Uh.
Sure.
Long adding and probably maybe driveway.
From subdivision. So you might need to.
Yeah, well, maybe we're not have what, it will make up for the two and a half. Well, the quick meeting next, the next meeting.
I would really love to cross off subdivision and driveway.
Be nice.
We're gonna take a break over the summer, then we're gonna have work to do when we come back in the fall. And the site plan will have to be done too, if, if once the subdivisions. And we'll have master plan chapters to adopt.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
When, uh, summer meeting schedule? We discussed it briefly, I thought, last time, we didn't set dates.
Yeah, so if we did the sixteenth of July. That would be the third Tuesday. And we do the twentieth of August. That would be the third Thursday. I think that's how we've kind of done it in the past.
Yeah.
A lot of people like to take vacation the first couple of weeks of July, first couple of weeks of August.
Definitely away both of those.
Yeah, so it kind of, it's always kind of made sense. Well, way, way back in the nineties, we used to take July and August off completely. I don't, I don't know if there was an RSA saying state law that we had to meet, but we didn't. We said, we'll see you in September. So do we wanna vote on those dates?
In June is both normal schedule.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. So do we wanna vote now on that summer date, summer hours, summer dates? I'll entertain the motion.
I'll make a motion, we meet July sixteenth. And August twentieth, with no meeting on July second. And no meeting on July sixth. Sorry, August.
Second by Russ.
Yes.
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 Yeah. Jim?
Yes.
All right. Perfect.
So I think we have a work conflict.
That's the one that we're.
Well, it'll be a quick meeting, and we won't be talking about driveways. So, it might be a quick meeting, that's all right.
Let's really try to have a subdivision.
Yeah, yeah, that. The word that's.
Yeah. Well, there, there will definitely be corrections, and don't expect to have a finished product at the next meeting. Cause even when I was going through, I found more, so. I expect you will find some.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Governor, you vote?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
All right, thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, all, have a nice night.